Plus the coaches, plus the grandparents, plus the siblings. An average of $500 is spent each weekend by families for food and lodging. Youth sports is a $32 billion industry that Odessa could benefit from greatly. We are the home of Friday Night Lights and could build upon being known for our sports.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question. Um, did you see a change in the applicants? I mean, do the same people normally apply or is it?
It's half and half. Typically, the Odessa College rodeo does apply each year, but the grappling is new. Uh, the unfinished business basketball tournament is new. The rodeos, uh, the PBR rodeo applied for the first time last year. And then this is their second year that they plan to apply. West Texas blowout soccer tournament is another one that actually they, they have not been able to apply the last couple of years because of weather and now COVID. So, um, we do try to generate the new business. I know Teresa has reached out to several new groups, um, to, to bring a, a cornhole tournament. And, you know, just things that would, that would be new to our area.
And how do you market the application? Do they, do they just know that that's?
No, that is something that, well, we've worked with the Etto County Coliseum, especially because they do recruit sporting events as well. And so Erin Martin is aware. We're just putting it out there more. I know that when Teresa visits with these groups, she also, uh, you know, sends out the information about it. But that's a good question. And that is something we should put on our website. And I'll have to, okay, it is on our website, so. Um, but maybe we need to, you know, that's a great, um, something to look at to see how we can promote it more so that people are aware. But we have visited with ECSD, that's another one. We go and visit with their coaches every year. And, um, one of the, the ECSD winter soccer tournament that came in January, that had not happened in quite some time. And because of marketing that program through speaking with their coaches, they applied for that many. And that was a great incentive for them.
And the gentleman, you, um, Hawkins, I believe?
Tommy Hawkins?
He, he said that we're not?
Yes, so they, these tournaments, these particularly, baseball tournaments are held in Midland, Hobbs, San Angelo, Andrews, and Lubbock. And so that's, we have, we have no tournaments for baseball in Odessa. And, I mean, I just got back from this weekend in Melissa, Texas. And if anybody's been to Melissa, Texas, there is nothing there, but they have this incredible sports home complex. And it is generating all these hotel nights in Allen and McKinney around Melissa. And, uh, it's just, it's, it's an industry that we're not tapping into. And it really could generate weekend business when our occupancy has been low, even when we had, um, oil and gas thriving. The, the hotels reached out to us and said, we need more weekend business. And that typically is what it is in sports.
Monica, the 28,000 that you haven't spent this year, will that, would you just be asking to carry that over?
Yes, ma'am, we would. Yes, we would like to carry that over as well.
So we could reduce your $65,000 request by 28,000 carryover?
We'd like to add to it if we could. This does tend to be a, a really great incentive. Um, you know, that's, that's what we'd like to do. But again, we respect your decisions.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Odessa Jackal Otsaki.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'm the new president of Odessa Jackal Otsaki. I'm coming from a town a little north of here called Amarillo. Uh, glad to be here though. Uh, and I want to say while I have the opportunity, I think your chamber and discover Odessa have been doing a fantastic job with everything they've been doing. I've been with Odessa Jackal since, since February and I'm just amazed at all the good work that's been going on as well as the council. Um, I would like to thank you for all the funds that you've afforded us in the past. And we appreciate the opportunity that you're giving us today. Um, we estimate we'll have 35,000 local attendees, 15,000 out of town for a total of 50,000. And the communitative number of expected room nights is probably around 1,100 or more. Uh, at this point, we are going forward to leave, leave NAHL that we're in. We're expecting to start our season in September. We'll have 60 games total, which will be 28 home games at this point. And as we all know, things could change, but that's what we're planning on for now. Uh, as you all know, the Jackal Ots have been in Odessa for over 23 years. And this will be our 10th season to be in the NAHL, which is a junior hockey team. Uh, we host 24 to 30 players aging from the age of 16 to 20 years old with the goal of placing them in college and start players down their career path that begins residing in Odessa. Through the 23 years, uh, we've worked hard to make sure that they bring their families in. And they, they do that quite often. They stay in hotels, eat in our restaurants. Uh, and we promote Odessa daily across the world as we recruit these 24 to 30 players to move to Odessa. As you probably know, uh, we have 24 to 30 players, but of those four will be, uh, European, if they're from Canada, Sweden, whatever they may be from, international players as well too. And they spend nine months here. Their families pay, bill the families X amount of money each and every month that rotates into this market as well too. So we appreciate the opportunity. We appreciate what you've done for us in the past and we look forward to the future. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next is Odessa Links.
Hello again. I'm Erica Thomas. And when I'm not volunteering, I'm actually the executive director of Odessa Links. And so tonight our request for Odessa Links is, is to support funding for our Links Community Conference. Our conference brings community partners across the state for essential educational training on topics relevant to the service nonprofit industry. Our conferences have traditionally sold out with the exception of possibly this year's because of everything that's going on. And as you can see, the topics we presented have included, um, areas such as poverty, trauma, self-care and health. Our request for next year's revive is to continue in keeping up with our annual conference and hopefully under better conditions. And to bring nationally recognized experts to present critical educational content for our partners across the state and the community so that we can eventually put that also into practice. We thank you for supporting us over the years. And we recognize and anticipated that we may not, as a community, have enough funds to go around. So we too adjusted our ask this year. And we hope this makes that decision a little easier. Uh, but I do want you to know that we thank you and it definitely has been essential in helping a lot of, um, a lot of agencies and partners that traditionally wouldn't have access to that educational content get trained on it. So I think that might've been helpful with everything that's going on. So, thank you so much.
Are there any questions?
Erica, are we gonna do a virtual?
So we've had to pivot this year. Um, we had already, um, I would say had spent a third of our funding. And so to keep in those lines, we were able to pivot it to a digital conference. So we're still bringing critical and important content, but definitely it has impacted us this year.
So your 15,000 that we awarded you, you're still gonna use that for a digital conference in this cycle?
So we anticipate to use some of the funding. Uh, we are working, um, we had a very dynamic speaker who would've been great in person, but virtually it's a different ballgame. So we are currently, um, trying to still secure our, um, digital speaker, virtual speaker. So, um, we anticipate a minimum of a third of our funding to be spent and possibly half for this year. Any other questions?
Any other question? Thank you very much. Next, uh, we're gonna go ahead and do three in a row. So we'll do the Odessa Parks Fall Festival, Starlight Village, and Rattlet. In two minutes, Mr. Pat.
That was per application?
Six.
Two for, six total?
No.
No, no, no. I'll make this real quick. On our first application is Fall Festival. We did not do Fall Festival this year because it does involve children and families. And with our COVID, um, that's going on, we did cancel the event. So, uh, that is a rollover and we're asking for those monies to be used next year for the event. And we'll just roll those over the same amount, same game plan, no difference in our advertising or events. And on the Starlight Village, of course, is our largest.
You didn't use any of the Fall Festival?
Do you need to read it for you, what?
No, I was just saying, you didn't use any of your Fall?
No, we canceled the entire event. And we made a decision early in the year that we probably wasn't gonna do it because of all the, the contact, the, the bounce houses that we have. Everything is just way too much contact for the public. So we didn't, we didn't touch those funds. So a complete rollover.
Now that's the one that's coming in?
That's correct.
In October.
Maybe. We have about a two-week timeframe and we have to pay bills when we get funded. So it makes it, it's pretty interesting, but we get it done.
Okay.
Thanks for the great staff. Corey.
So Steve, you, in your request, you said you're requesting $150,000. But you're 150,222. But the amount on your exhibit that's gonna be paid for with city funds is only 115,420. So is that really what your request from us?
Yes.
Not the 150?
No.
And then 100 is gonna roll over?
The full amount, yes.
So it's really 15 grand?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Yes.
15 grand on the Fall Festival, no?
Yes.
If you rolled 100,000, our, our real number is 115,000.
Roll it over.
Right. And we're rolling that over?
So it'll be 15,000 allocation if you want to.
For the Fall Festival?
Okay.
Which is where, we have 100,000 now and then, uh, if we roll that over, we just, we're asking for just another 15,000 actually on, on those numbers. Okay. Um, Starlight Village, biggest event that we have all year. Takes months and months of planning. Uh, we use a lot of volunteers. We are going to plan to have that event this year. It is a drive-through and, uh, we probably will eliminate the walking portion of the trail system itself and limit it to just drive-through. Or, um, well, and of course we have security that's out there. We're also gonna do away with Santa Claus this year. He'll be virtual probably, not, uh, sitting in his lap like we've done in the past, uh, just because of the, of the situation. So we do plan to go with the full amount of advertising, a, a new display. And, uh, we will also do a community Christmas tree lighting ceremony with, um, all the public officials. In a little bit different situation, we won't have the big celebration like we do on site. We'll probably do something virtual in the studio. A little bit, um, more creative planning and less contact with the public. But we do plan to utilize all the funds that we have this current year in the upcoming season. So our request is noted with those amounts is what we are requesting again. And that does include advertising and our displays for downtown.
Any questions?
I have a question, but I do want to just say, Steve, um, the Fall Festival and the Starlight Village are amazing.
Thank you.
And you guys, you and your staff do a great job and I think it's enjoyed by all. I know it's very crowded, very hard to get to every year. And so thank you for all, you and your staff for all the hard work.
Thanks, Mayor. It's great staff, does a good job. And they've established themselves as longstanding events that bring a lot of people to, um, our McKinney Park, which is fantastic and really, really both well-attended. And Rattlet Ranch, we have expended most of those funds and we, we will have all of those funds expended in just the next few months. We've sort of curtailed our advertising through most of the COVID because we could only accommodate a certain number of players. We had our limited tee times. And, uh, the minute that we were able to open up the Rattlet again, we were just unindated with people and a lot of complaints about staggering the tee times. But we were trying to limit the crowd exposure, limiting everything to, uh, four, maximum four. We're allowing people to have their own carts. And, uh, it was really a real problem to try to accommodate all the tee times. So I stopped the advertising. You might've seen some station identification breaks that we had, really nicely done. And, uh, we stopped those just because we were filling up Saturdays and we would get 20, 30 calls at a time and everything was booked so fast. So now that we're able to spread out our, our capacity as far as accommodations, we've gone back into some advertising, we're going back with our station identifications. And this last package, we went all the way up into the Lubbit market, which is a big market for us on the television, uh, and the media. So we were able to bring that hit Seminole and all these outlying smaller communities, people in the oil field. And they can come into Odessa to Rattlet Ranch and we try to make that outreach. So basically the same amount again.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
I think it'd be good to point out that the attendee donations at, um, Starlight, Starlight Village, 44,000. I think that's really good just from attendee donations.
Okay, Permian Basin Fair and Expo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Chris Yant. I'm the president of the fair this year. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the contributions for last year and the previous years y'all donated to us. Uh, you know, this year we're asking for the same amount. Uh, we've had, we have 52 board members on our board that, uh, we each pay dues every year. We, this is our 45th year anniversary for the fair. Uh, we also award, uh, numerous scholarships for the youth here in the Permian Basin. We reach out to over 40 countries, the state, uh, uh, within the state is what, uh, through social media, television, newspapers, billboards, our website. So, you know, we, we reach out and have a good time at the fair.
Any questions?
Still anticipate that we'll be able to do it safely in September?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next is Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo.
Hi, my name is Gary Don Cane. I'm the vice president of Sand Hill Stock Show and Rodeo. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council for having us again and, uh, for all the help you've given us in the past. Uh, our organization is an 87-year-old organization. We've been around for a while. We're kind of staple here and we'd, uh, really like to keep, uh, be a part of the community. But the money we're asking, you guys are saying we're asking last year, uh, we had, uh, I think between, uh, the Contest Defenders Committee, there was a total of like 25,800 people involved. You know, 25% of coming from out of town. And, uh, the, the stock show and rodeos promote our youth. Uh, we, uh, try to grow our kids through the lessons, uh, you know, discipline education in a livestock, uh, rodeo atmosphere. And we compete, uh, against a lot of big, uh, towns in the state, which, uh, would be San Antonio, Houston, Austin. And, uh, we are number five in the state in the stock show. Uh, we gave about, uh, $271,000 in sales from our stock show last year to the youth in our sales. So, uh, that helps them move on to the next shows and gives them a chance to, you know, appreciate what they've learned and grown. Uh, our rodeo is, uh, in the top 50 of over 3,000 rodeos in the state, or in the nation, I'm sorry. And, uh, your, your money has helped us in promoting our rodeo across the community and the state of Texas. And, uh, we get a lot of vendors, uh, top contestants, uh, that, uh, come in and spend 14 days here. And, you know, it puts, uh, quite a few heads in bed over a two-week period. So, uh, we're pretty proud that they're coming to stay. We had, uh, our biggest rodeo last year because we, we made some changes. Uh, and we had, we almost doubled our contestants last year in the rodeo. So we're pretty proud of that and very fortunate that we were able to get our rodeo over with before the virus came and affected everything, you know? January, we were, uh, early before this happened. And, uh, a lot of rodeos were being shut down, stock shows and rodeos being shut down. So it's, it's hurting, you know, not just in the rodeo community, but everything's going on across our state. So I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, we'll get this coronavirus behind us before rodeo rolls around in January. But we're asking for the same amount of money that we asked for last year. You guys helped us out a bunch and it was a way that we could get our community shared, you know, through advertising and, uh, bringing people into town. Uh, this is Nancy Kane, she is vice president of promotions. So if y'all have any questions on the money side of that.
I don't have a question, but I'd like to volunteer Tom for the bull riding.
That, it, it was entertaining. It was short and fast, but it was entertaining. And, uh, I know, uh, I, and I've, I've met most of you guys, uh, Mr. Sheldon I have not met, but welcome to the jungle.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Texas Tours Entertainment.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Norma, how you doing? Uh, my name's, uh, Nick Hernandez Senior. Um, I'm a resident of, uh, Odessa since 1952. The, uh, 49th Annual Tejano Super Show, also known as the Tejano Supercar Show, is up, uh, it's a three-day event November 20th, uh, 19, 20, and 21st of November. It's a tradition here in Odessa for over decades. The car show, and other than the car show, it's, uh, it's more of a big, uh, community event. We have, um, usually from between 400 to 500, uh, cars, which are participants that come in to participate from all over the United States. I'd say maybe about 75% of those are from out of town. Each car that comes in here, uh, brings a crew of at least four to six people who spend the night in Odessa. So we'd say we have 300 people coming in from out of town with 300 cars. Multiply that by four or five, we're talking about at least 1,000 people spending the night over, uh, Friday, Saturday, and some on Sunday. So, um, last year was a very successful event. And I just want to thank the council for, you know, for just for helping out the, the community. And, uh, I, I appreciate just whatever y'all decide that you all can do for me. Um, now I know that with the situation the way it is, um, I will not jeopardize my health, my family, or my community. So if it gets to a point that, uh, that, I'm hoping that things get better. But if they don't, then, you know, the money will be returned back to the council.
Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is University of Texas Permian Basin Athletics.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. First of all, pardon my notes. I never joined Toastmasters and I'm really regretting that decision at this moment. Um, we really appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Casey Carson and I am here with Rebecca Schlurf, Wendelsmaw Grass, Inland Andress, representing me to Permian Basin Athletics. I grew up in Odessa and always knew I wanted to come home at some point. In January, I learned of an opportunity with the athletic department. So I did a little Google research and realized that Dr. Woodley had this vision, this wonderful vision to grow the university and recognize athletics as a great way to do that, to accomplish that. That really excited me. I worked at Texas Tech University for 17 years. And I can tell you from that experience that a winning football season makes everyone in the community a winner. So that's why I'm here. Um, one thing that my Google search didn't let me in on is that athletics programs and universities are not funded by state resources. Therefore, we are funded by students, student fees, and external supporters. We are very thankful for the support that you all have given us. And I know that there has been an issue. One of the main things about being a good partner is being a good steward of the resources that we're given. We got a call last week about the funds that were awarded from you all. And I will say Rebecca started about two weeks before I did in January. She has been researching the situation. She's been working with the university accounting office and we have addressed it. We are correcting it and we can assure you it will not happen again. We are using the funds. There was just a mix-up with the accounting office. So believe me, the needs in our department are endless. So, um, what I would say after that, are we a good investment? I, surprisingly, I would argue yes. But for this group, not just because we provide an educated workforce to the community, not just because we provide quality of living increases for the citizens. But because we're great. And we have a lot, uh, we bring in a lot of visitors.
Any questions?
So this 87,000 that you haven't requested yet, you're going to request, you're, you, you, you got receipts to send that to this cycle before this is for the next cycle with no carryover, right?
Correct. And we have submitted documentation about that. Uh, most of the, the majority of the funds have already been used, they just haven't been billed to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is West Texas Track Club.
Mayor, I just spoke to the planner for this, um, for this event and she is on her way. Does she move to the bottom or is, should I speak on her behalf or you? Oh, is that you?
Oh, that's the lady's first.
Oh. She was talking to me and she said she didn't know. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, this is a, yes, how's that?
How are y'all doing? Uh, Mayor, Council, pleasure. Uh, my name's Eugene Niebo. I'm the head coach for the West Texas Track Club. And I guess I just want to thank y'all for your continued support, just helping out the kids. Uh, just to tell you a little bit about the track club. Our main goal is to combat childhood obesity. Um, that's a big problem just trying to promote health from a young age. So it just becomes a habit and a natural lifestyle. As we see with the virus, we know, one thing we've noticed is that the typically, which is also to a fault, the healthy young people are not as worried as people with comorbid conditions. So starting at a young age, promoting a healthy lifestyle can hopefully decrease those comorbid conditions in our population. Uh, due to the virus, we're unfortunately not able to have the track meet. Uh, we spent maybe a 10th or 12th of the funds that y'all, we received from y'all on medals, uh, because we had to purchase those at an early time period before we found out everything was canceled. Uh, again, just want to thank you for your continued support and praying that we're allowed to benefit the kids next year, barring no, uh, interruption from the virus. And with that, I'll take your questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if the balance can be rolled over, will it ever? Never on your request.
Uh, next is White Pool House.
Good evening. My name is Christine Holcombe. I'm with the historic White Pool House. It's a popular tourist destination for those visiting Odessa or attending our events. The museum and its grounds represent two important eras in our history, the pioneers and the early entrepreneurs. All of the people from those eras had at least one thing in common, they were tough. Not only did they withstand the challenges and elements of establishing a home and a thriving business in the desert, they endured the trying historic periods of our collective history. As leaders, please consider what it must've been like back then, all those years ago. Consider post-Civil War, the flu pandemic of 1918, World War I, World War II, polio, the Great Depression. All of these events were conquered without the benefit of computers, iPhones, a 24/7 news feed, or social media. It was the people who banded together, supported each other, and we pulled each other through. To say it's been a rough year at White Pool is an understatement and it's only June. We were proud to have become a strong nonprofit. We gave tours and hosted events almost every weekend until the end of this February, and then everything stopped. As you can guess, we've been hit hard, but we'd like to think we're kind of tough too. We have been allo- allowed to reopen at 50%, but people are still justifiably nervous about large gatherings. And by the way, I want to thank you, Mayor Ta- Mayor Turner, for your leadership and the daily briefings. I want to mention that we are, we still have plans to shoot part of an Australian I want to mention that we still have plans to shoot part of an Australian movie also. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Yeah. You have so many left over from this year, you're going to use that before the end of this cycle, aren't you?
Yes, it's in process.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Next is USATF, West Texas.
So, that's the one I meant to speak up for. She is on her way, however, I may speak on behalf of the organization, if that's okay.
Mia Nelson is the director that's over this event that will be occurring this July. This event was supposed to take place this past July, but obviously because of the COVID-19 pandemic, they were, they had to cancel it. But the Olympics allowed them to push it to next year for 2021. This event is significant. In two thousand and sixteen, we were on a four-year rotation. In two thousand and sixteen, when it was held in Odessa, there were eighteen hundred attendees, and it brought in two-point-two million dollars into the community. They bring several, it's a week-long event, it starts on a Tuesday and ends on a Saturday. And then they pay for the rental for ECISD to rent their track, and they also work with Odessa College as well. Trying to think if there's any, if I'm leaving anything out. They, again, they bring a lot of families. We help them locate the rooms for their referees that they bring. There's a lot of collaboration with them on that. Our department, you know, is going to work closely with them just to assist them. But obviously, if they receive this money from you, then we will not be assisting them financially. We'll help them in other ways with Odessa, you know, literature, but not any other financial support.
Monica, could they have applied for the grant?
Yes, ma'am, they could. They certainly could. As you can see, they're requesting fifty-five thousand. And SERP, if we get the sixty-five thousand, that depletes it, it's, you know, it's very difficult. So, I had suggested to her to apply for the money. They do qualify for quite a bit, and based on those calculations that I gave you, it was like fifty-two thousand that they had a return of investment because it was a two-point-two, you know, million-dollar, just in funds that, or in sales tax that they bring to the community. So, yes, ma'am, I mean, they could, they could apply for SERP. But again, with their big ask, it's, that's why I had recommended to Mia Nelson to apply for it on their own, on their behalf.
And with SERP, if they're qualified for that large amount, could you have, could the sports committee have chosen to maybe say, "We can't do this because it almost depletes our funds, but we can do this"?
Yes, ma'am. And that's probably the hardest part with SERP, is that, you know, it starts in October, and then you start having groups, and you can't not award these people based on what you think's going to happen in, you know, in July of the following year. But, you know, depending on what's left, I mean, certainly, we would definitely reach, try to help them.
Monica, this is the, this is that USATF?
Yes, ma'am.
Did they ask for fifty?
They asked, I believe they asked for fifty-five.
Fifty-five was the track group?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, they did ask for fifty, I'm sorry, I didn't even look up there on to see what they asked for.
I just want to be sure I wasn't still back on two times.
Sorry, I've got the two track and pool clubs. Obviously, I've got those mixed up, I apologize for that. No, this is the Olympic qualifier.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next two, Acton County Council, is an interlocal agreement, so, and then we have the administration fees. So, now we will start to allocate the money. We would start with District One, but since Councilmember Shelton's brand-new, I would pass it to District Two.
Can I?
Yes.
Get a point of clarification.
Sure.
There's about three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, two-seventy-three rollover. So, when we tell you what you want to spend, are we taking that into account? So, so it would be, is that what we're doing?
So...
For instance, so, let's just take it easy. For instance, the West Texas Track Club has fifty thousand rollover. They asked for fifty-five, so I have five thousand on my sheet. Or would it be fifty-five thousand?
So, I think he mentioned he'd spent ten percent, so he's probably just paid five thousand. I don't think they've requested that yet. Is that the feeling that's on there? But, so, they do rollover now or now, from last year to the new year, and then you wouldn't be allocating out of your current net?
Okay, so we do consider those rollovers and give you the net after the rollover in our, okay.
Thank you.
Is that first?
Yeah.
Do you still let us know about the rollover? Because that's not automatic.
Do what now?
You'll need to let me know about the rollover, so I can write down, because it's not automatic.
Okay, Senator Brown. We start at the very beginning.
General fund or hotel?
Let's start at the general fund, since it's the top of our pages.
Okay.
Okay, Children's Miracle Network, twenty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand dollars. Odessa Crime Stoppers. These are where their funds are carried forward on that.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty thousand. Permian Care, ninety thousand. Odessa Team Court, sixty-nine, one-eight-five. UTPB First Five Permian Basin, there was not a carryover there either. Is that right? Fifteen thousand.
Uh, UTPB First Five, fifteen?
Fifteen, yes. I tried, Dr. Young Professionals of Odessa, fifteen. On the Black Cultural Council of Odessa, the carryover at thirty-eight, and I'd like to award them fifty thousand. I hope this year you can enhance the Black cultural history and the other events. Joe, yeah, with that. Commemorative Air Force, Assistant Councilman.
Is she still here? Is she still here? Can I just ask you one thing before you say your name? I did get a message here from Midland, that they only gave you thirty-five thousand. It wasn't the same thing we gave you.
Now, may I ask everyone in Midland has submitted applications to reduce them? And they reduced it further after we submitted them?
I'm sorry, I don't understand who they is.
The Midland City Council.
So, so they didn't pay the same thing we did?
Not for the twenty-twenty-one.
So, they were, did you request fifty and they only gave you thirty-five, is that what you're saying?
For twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, we requested fifty, they asked thirty-five, and you're giving thirty-five. It's still, it's still, we voted on it at the council meeting, but that is the information I received from them.
We just wanted to make everybody aware of that, for sure.
No, I said we give fifty, let's go for it, that'll be thirty-five. But it might be already given, so zero, carryover fifty. Downtown Odessa, five hundred thousand.
Now, there's a carryover of fifty-six. Fifty-six, seven-seventy-three. When you take off the forty-five thousand that she said she was going to spend, what we had was a hundred-and-one, two-seventy-three, and then she said she was going to spend forty-five thousand of it.
Okay. I apologize, I can't hear tonight, so whatever that difference would be, if you'll put that in there, please.
Between five hundred and that? Or what are you, the five-sixty?
Between the amount requested, five-sixteen, six-eighty-three, less whatever is the carryover. Wish we would have had that carryover in separate category, would have been easier to see, because I, my numbers have changed about that.
Yeah, that's four-fifty-nine, nineteen. Is that right? If you had the, if you had the carryover at fifty-six, seven-seventy-three, and they requested five-sixteen, six-eighty-three, that difference is four-fifty-nine, nineteen, I think.
We'll check that.
Pretty sure that's right.
Downtown Odessa Parks, eighty thousand. Fiesta West Texas, I understand, there's a fifteen thousand dollar carryover, is that correct?
That's right.
So, worth fifteen thousand dollars for that. Junior Jacks Youth Hockey, fifteen thousand. Junior League of Odessa, fifteen thousand. Odessa Arts, seven hundred thousand.
And there's a fifty thousand carryover on that. So, that makes it...
Discover Odessa, nine hundred thousand. Discover Odessa Sports Event, there's a twenty-eight thousand dollar carryover from the call, plus the thirty-seven thousand.
Sorry, Monica.
Odessa Jackaloves, thirty thousand. Odessa Links.
She said about a seventy-five hundred carryover.
It said five hundred.
So, that'd be forty-five hundred for what?
The seventy-five hundred plus the seventy-five hundred?
Oh, so you're saying fifteen is what you want to give them?
I'm sorry, they were set twelve, they were adjusted, I'm sorry.
So, forty-five hundred.
Right. Odessa Parks Ball Festival, I understand, there's fifteen thousand dollars remaining. I mean, there's a hundred and something available, so fifteen thousand dollars?
Fifteen, four-twenty.
Odessa Parks, Starlight Village, a hundred thousand. Permian Basin Fair and Expo position, a hundred and forty-five thousand. Ratlin Ranch, twenty thousand. Sand Hills Stock Show and Rodeo, a hundred thousand. Texas Tours Entertainment, twenty-five thousand. UT Permian Basin, seventy-five thousand. West Texas Track Club, understanding fifty thousand, labels, five thousand. White Pool House, Crins, Arden, forty-three thousand. USATF, fifty thousand. You have fifty to thirty-two, five-ninety-nine.
Okay. District Three, Councilmember White.
Ready?
Yes.
Starting with the general fund, Children's Miracle Network, fifteen thousand. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty thousand. Permian Care, ninety thousand. Odessa Team Court, sixty-five thousand. UTPB First Five, ten thousand. Young Professionals, twelve thousand. Are you caught up with me?
Yep.
All right. Odessa Cultural, or the Black Cultural Council of Odessa, it's, now, Peggy, didn't you say it's a thirty-eight thousand rollover?
Yes.
All right, okay, then I'll propose a thirty-seven thousand. Commemorative Air Force with a fifty thousand dollar rollover, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, twenty-five thousand?
DC rollover. Oh, you want to give them twenty-five more?
Oh, no, no, sorry, oops. Sorry about that, yeah, I'm going with the rollover. Downtown Odessa, four hundred and fifty thousand, with the fifty-six, seven-seventy-three rollover. Downtown Odessa Parks, seventy-five thousand. Fiesta West Texas, fifteen thousand, with the fifteen thousand rollover. Junior Jacks Hockey, ten thousand. Junior League of Odessa, twelve thousand. Odessa Arts, seven hundred thousand, with the fifty thousand dollar rollover. Discover Odessa, nine-third, yeah, nine-thirty-nine, three-ten. Discover Odessa Sports, thirty thousand. Then with the rollover. Odessa Jackaloves, thirty thousand. Odessa Links, eleven thousand. Odessa Parks Ball Festival, fifteen thousand. Odessa Parks, Starlight Village, Starlight Village, a hundred and fifty thousand. Permian Basin Fair and Expo, a hundred and twenty thousand. Ratlin Ranch Golf, forty-eight thousand. Sand Hills Stock Show and Rodeo, ninety thousand. Texas Tours Entertainment, twenty thousand. UTPB Basin Athletics, ninety-five thousand. West Texas Trax, a rollover, so that's a Z rollover. What, right? Oh, yeah, okay, that's right. Five thousand on West Texas Track Club. And White Pool House, thirty-seven thousand. USATF, thirty-five thousand. And then Acton County Council, fifty thousand. Administration, thirty-two, five-ninety-nine.
And you, Deitra, you knew that Odessa Links said that they'd have seventy-five hundred rollover? I didn't know if you...
No, I did not.
You said eleven thousand for it, so I didn't know if you...
Yes, and... No, I did not have that ready now. So, they have seventy-five?
Right.
Seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-five hundred, they have rollover.
Oh, okay, then on theirs, if you would change mine to...
Forty-five hundred makes it twelve.
Yeah.
If you wanted eleven, it'd be thirty-five hundred.
Right, forty-five.
Next, Councilwoman Scholz, District Four.
Give me a second, I have a... I haven't done this on the mouse here, excuse me.
All right, Councilwoman Scholz.
Okay. This is all for you. Children's Miracle Network, twenty thousand. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty. Permian Care, ninety. Team Court, sixty-seven, one-seventy. First Five Permian Basin, ten thousand. Young Professionals of Odessa, fifteen thousand. Okay, Black Cultural Council of Odessa, forty thousand. Commemorative Air Force, ten thousand. Downtown Odessa, four-fifty. Downtown Odessa Parks, eighty. Fiesta West Texas, fifteen. Junior Jacks, ten. Junior League, fifteen thousand. Odessa Arts, six-fifty. Discover Odessa, nine-thirty-nine, three-ten. Discover Odessa Sports Events, thirty-five thousand. Odessa Jackaloves, thirty thousand. Odessa Links, forty-five hundred. Odessa Parks Ball Festival, sixteen thousand. Starlight Village, a hundred and twenty-five. Permian Basin Fair, a hundred and twenty-five. Ratlin Ranch Golf, forty-eight, nine-oh-eight. Sand Hills, one hundred thousand. Texas Tours, twenty thousand. UT Permian Basin Athletics, one hundred thousand. West Texas Track Club, ten thousand. White Pool House, forty thousand. UTATF, fifty thousand.
All right, District Five, Councilmember Willis.
A request for Starlight Village.
Um, Willis, a request for Starlight Village.
Starlight Village's request was.
I've got two numbers here.
Two, twenty-eight, two, forty-three.
Okay. Okay, Children's Miracle Network, twenty thousand. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty thousand. Permian Care, eighty thousand. Odessa Team Court, sixty thousand. UTPB First Five, ten thousand. Young Professionals of Odessa, five thousand. Ready? Black Chamber Commerce, fifty-five thousand. CAF, zero, for the rollover. Downtown Odessa, four hundred and fifty thousand rollover. Uh, Parks, seventy thousand. Fiesta West Texas, thirty thousand. Junior Jack's Youth, ten thousand. Junior League of Odessa, fifteen thousand. Odessa Arts, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Discover Odessa, nine hundred thousand. Uh, Discover Odessa Sports, thirty-five thousand. Odessa Jackal Oats, twenty-five thousand.
What was that last number?
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
I'm ready.
Odessa Links, five thousand. Parks Fall Festival, a hundred and fifty thousand, with the rol, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand, with the rollover. Starlight Village, a hundred and ninety thousand. Permian Basin Fair, a hundred thousand. Ratlet Golfing, thirty thousand. Sand Hill Rodeo, a hundred thousand. Texas Tours Entertainment, thirty thousand. UTPB Athletics, seventy-five thousand. West Texas Track Club, five thousand with the rollover. White Pool House, thirty thousand. USATF Regional Track, forty thousand. And.
Okay, uh, Councilmember David.
Children's Miracle Network, twenty thousand. Odessa Crime Stoppers, sixty thousand. Permian Care, ninety thousand. Odessa Team Court, sixty thousand. UTPB First Five, ten thousand. Young Professionals of Odessa, fifty thousand. Black Cultural Council, fifty thousand. Commemorative Air Force, zero. Downtown Odessa, four fifty-nine, nine-ten. Uh, Ornamental Trees. I'm going to say eighty, I was only going to do one, but that might look crazy.
No, actually.
Fiesta, Fiesta West Texas, a thousand. Junior Jack's Hockey, ten thousand. Junior League of Odessa, fifteen thousand. Odessa Arts, seven hundred thousand. Discover Odessa, nine thirty-nine, three-ten. Discover Odessa Sports Events, thirty-seven thousand. Odessa Jackal Oats, fifteen thousand. Odessa Links, forty-five hundred. Odessa Parks Fall Festival, fifteen.